Good evening, everyone. And thanks for coming. This is the City Council meeting of July 5th, 2016. We'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Laurenti. Wright. Wyffenbach. Doyle. Estes. Lewis. Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, and now, if you're willing and able, we'll have a invocation provided by Elizabeth Aw, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Well, dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you this evening that we have the opportunity to gather and and take care of business for our fine city, and I pray, dear Lord, that you would give guidance and direction to the City Council as they weigh the issues, and may they have wisdom and unity as they discuss things, and I pray that those that are here and that would speak from the floor, that they would speak with peace and that unity would reign here tonight. We thank you so much for this wonderful city and those that have risen to leadership and and have really taken it to heart to make this a better place for all of us. We pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and now we're gonna have some an award and recognition down front. Well, thanks for being here, everyone. This was the this is the City Council meeting that's held once a year when outgoing members of the council have their last couple of items on the agenda, which we've already had, and the incoming council members have their first. And so, tonight, at their last council meeting, is Alderman Ron Wyffenbach and Chad Lewis, and Ron couldn't be here tonight, but Chad's here, as you've already heard. And I have to tell you that I've only served a year with Chad. He's a good, steady member of this council. But these comments that you heard all the way up here, what I hear in my ear all throughout that meeting for the last year, so I'm gonna, I'm really gonna miss him. But it takes something special to serve on the City Council. It is not the place you go to become famous or well-liked or any of those things. It's to answer a call of of duty that has to be done to keep the city moving forward and and not many people volunteer for this type of thing, so we appreciate those who do. So, for Chad, we got this plaque that sums it, sums it up. And it says, "Chad Lewis, thank you for your years of service and dedication to the city of Rapid City, Alderman Ward III, Rapid City Common Council, 2012-2016." Thank you.
Am I drop the mic when I leave? I, you know, I'm a guy that likes to talk a lot, but I don't talk a lot up here, at least I try not to, so.
Like I said, not everyone volunteers for this because it's, it's not always easy, and it's, and even though there's some squabbles throughout the year, apparently it's not easy to leave either. But Chad, I want you to know that we appreciate you, and now we want you to stand here holding this plaque so we can take some photos of you.
Yeah.
And he did lose, he left.
And now unless someone has an objection, we'll be in recess for a few minutes, but keep your seats. This is where we're gonna swear in the the new members of the council. We did the middle here, so you guys are all. We hear all y'all say. All y'all. Aye, Steve Laurenti. So I'll unlace, swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation for the purpose of evasion. That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of Alderman. War II. Rapid City Council. Rapid City, South Dakota. According to the law. And to the best of my ability. So help me, God. And we're back. Thank you for your patience. The next item is to hold election of officers for the position of City Council President and City Council Vice President. So nominations for City Council President are now in order. Okay, we have one nomination for Brad Estes. Any further nominations? Okay, seeing none, the nominations will close. And there's no need for a vote, so Brad Estes is elected the City Council President again.
Oh, come on, make a vote.
Congratulations. And now nominations for City Council Vice President are now in order.
We'd like to nominate Amanda Scott.
We have one nomination for Amanda Scott. Okay, and we have a nomination for Richie Nordstrom. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations for City Council Vice President. So I'm handing out the official scrap paper. And the council members will vote for the position of City Council Vice President for either Amanda Scott or Richie Nordstrom. And when they're complete, Pauline will collect them. Put your name on it, too, if you wouldn't mind. And now the city's chief finance officer will tally the votes. Okay, so Amanda Scott is elected City Council Vice President by vote of seven to three. Traditionally, the City Council President would sit where Mr. Estes is sitting, and the Vice President would sit here, but we're not going to change seats tonight. We'll just show up next time in the different seating arrangement. So thank you, everyone, for participating in that. Now, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion? Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're onto general public comment, and there are no speaker forms for general public comment. Everyone in the audience who's here for item number forty-seven will be calling on you and hopefully just a few minutes to approach the podium. So we'll leave general public comment, go on to the non-public hearing items, items five through thirty-nine. Again, open public comment on five through thirty-two. There are no speaker forms, so we'll close public comment. And go on to consent items, five through thirty-two. Are there any items that the council members would like to remove from consent? If not, could I have a motion for approval, please? Okay, we have a motion. And a second to approve items five through thirty-two on the consent calendar. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we're on to non-consent items, items thirty-three through thirty-nine. We'll open and close public comment, and we'll go on to item number thirty-three, and I'll ask Amanda Scott to read in these items.
Mayor, item number thirty-three is the first reading of Ordinance 6121 and Ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero six of Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Advanced Engineering for Mark Simpson for the rezoning from General Agricultural District to Light Industrial District for property generally described as being located east of Fountain Plaza and South Plaza Drive intersection. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number thirty-four is the first reading of Ordinance 6123 and Ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero six of Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers Incorporated for a rezoning from low-density residential district to General Agricultural District for property generally described as being located at twenty-one oh one City Springs Road. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval on item thirty-four. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number thirty-five, the legal and finance committee items. Thirty-five, we have a Human Relations Commission semi-annual update. Is there someone here from, yes, there is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and congratulations to the new members. Welcome. My name is Sue Timmons, and I'm the Chair of the Rapid City Human Relations Commission, and this is a required report that I give every six months. And I'll start with our numbers. Since the last reporting period, the Attorney, the Attorney's Office handled ten phone calls regarding potential discrimination complaints on behalf of the commission. And in addition to those ten phone calls, six meetings were scheduled with Assistant City Attorney Wade Nyberg to gather more detailed information about the incidents that they were complaining of. Several contacts resulted in no meetings being scheduled because the incidents did not meet the Rapid City Human Relations Commission screening standard. And the most common reason for not meeting that standard was that the alleged incidents took place either outside of the hundred-and-eighty deadline, hundred-and-eighty-day deadline that is specified in our ordinance, or it occurred outside of the city limits. And so, it was, as a consequence, not within our jurisdiction. However, depending on the type of complaint, those callers were referred by Attorney Watney Nyberg to the State Division of Human Rights, or HUD, Fair Housing, or the Dakota Plains Legal Services. Two of the six meetings that were scheduled were with the same potential complainant, but no complaint could be filed based on the circumstances. One meeting resulted in a complaint being drafted, but the complainant didn't pursue signing the complaint, so it was dropped. One formal complaint was drafted, but it was dismissed by the complainant after he and the respondent resolved the the issue informally, which I think is a good result. That's what we like to see, bringing the parties together. Three of the six potential complaints were housing-related, and the remaining complaints were public accommodations issues. Under education outreach, which we're tasked to do by ordinance, we have a new public service announcement, which I'm really proud of, and it was linked to the agenda. I hope some of you were able to see it. The, it's titled "Together We Can," and it was developed and produced by Tim Riley of Midco. He's done four of these for us now, and this one, I think, is just really well-done. So happy with it. It's going to run free of charge on the Midco cable channels when requested by us, and Midco will also make this public service announcement available to local TV stations if they would like to run it. We're extremely grateful to Tim Riley for the time and expertise that he has given to us over the years and for helping us get our message out to the public. In the past six months, we placed notices about the work that we do and how to contact us in the Native Sun News. We, attending some of the meetings locally, we learned that a number of our Native American community members were not aware of the work that we do or how to contact us, so we felt that this was a good way to make contact. We have, we have a new brochure, and this was designed for us by our recording secretary, Stacy Lund-Rodner, and we have just a few things to tweak on it, but it's going to be available very soon for handouts when we do presentations, and it will be available downstairs or for anyone who wants it. So I'm really looking forward to getting this approved, hopefully Thursday. The city has updated its websites, and we have added some information that we hope will be of benefit to the public. A copy of our ordinance is there, along with all of our agendas and minutes. And also, we are adding a page of frequently asked questions, so that the public can get an idea of some of the things that they're wondering about, and we've also, I've been telling you about this PowerPoint presentation that we developed to take out to the community, and that has been completed, and we've already started making presentations. One or two of the commission members attend and describe the work that we do and the kinds of cases that we handle. So far, let's see. We've presented at Lakota Homes at their monthly meeting, at the Mayor's Disability Committee meeting, and Black Hills Diversity Network. Sometime next, I think later this month or next month, the Library Board has also requested a presentation on the work that we do. The commissioners continue to attend a variety of meetings in order to stay informed regarding local civil rights issues and initiatives. I've made a commitment to ongoing training and in-service for the commission members, and there's going to be a review of duties and responsibilities at our next meeting. In addition, Assistant Attorney Allison Krielman will present information to clarify the legal meaning of the term "protected class" in the context of sex discrimination. The logo that we're using in our public service announcement on our brochures was, was owned by Getty Images, and we were able to obtain the rights to use this image on all of our publications with, for a nominal fee. So that's gonna be available for our use in the future. In June, Assistant City Attorney Allison Krielman replaced Wade Nyberg as the attorney assigned to the Human Relations Commission, and Jamie Anderson stepped into the position of Recording Secretary vacated by Stacy Lund-Rodner. We welcome Allison and Jamie to the commission, and I want to thank Wade and Stacy for all the work they've done for us over the past years. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And I would like to invite any of the new commission members or the old, or new City Council members or old members to visit us at our meeting. We meet the first Thursday of every month, and we're meeting this coming Thursday between two and four. You're always welcome to stop in and see what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge your report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge, and we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. As a liaison to the Human Relations Commissions for the last two years, it's been my honor to serve with you guys, and just your outreach has been outstanding. I've seen you grow so much in the last two years to really let people know that you exist, what you do, and that you're effective. So, thank you for all your work, because, you know, with TV ads, brochures, and the, and the public presentations that you're doing, it's just really helping people in the community understand that those needs can be met, those, those issues can be addressed, and we have that kind of a mechanism at the city level. So thank you for your work. Thank you.
Okay, motion and a second to. Okay, motion and a second to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're on to item number thirty-six. Request for half of the 2017 annual vision funds be made available for community projects. And this is an item that I brought up to the council through written communication in late June. And there is a letter... My letter to the council is linked to that agenda item. And so I'm really asking... overarching question is to allow the mayor, me, to put together a vision committee made up of eight community members and an additional chairperson from the community to receive proposed vision projects, to analyze them, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the city council on which ones should be approved. And it would be just for 2017. So initially, I had asked the council at an earlier meeting to postpone or freeze the vision process until we had more time to work on the civic center issues, to know where we were with funding and so on. And they were gracious enough to grant that. And so that's what we did. We postponed it until October 2017. Since that time, some of the items have become somewhat clearer with the civic center discussion. But what's become abundantly clear is that there are folks in the community who have ideas for vision projects and want to get those things on the table and discussed. So in good conscience, I decided that, based on the knowledge that on any scenario, on how we may fix the civic center with a small, relatively small modification, with a medium-sized remodel, or with an all-out building of a new arena, on any scenario, I think there's evidence that we won't need any more than fifty percent of the future vision funds. And so in 2016, the vision funds are building right now. And by the end of this year, we project around thirteen million dollars will be in that vision account. For 2017, if we award half of that vision fund, it'll be in the neighborhood of six-point-five million dollars for community projects, we'll bank another six-point-five million to keep for civic center repairs or modifications. So that will give us nineteen-point-five million dollars to put down on any debt service, and then the potential of six-and-a-half million dollars per year in payments for a bond to fix whatever the needs are at the civic center. So it's pretty... Although it's big numbers, numbers that I can't... I'll never see in my checking account, but they're big numbers. And I think the math is pretty easy, though, that we should go ahead and open the 2017 process. So that's how we got to this item on the agenda. And so there is a city ordinance that stands in the way of doing this. There's a city ordinance that was rewritten prior to the expansion campaign of a couple of years ago. That was written very specifically. It's got some limitations in there. So realistically, the council will have to evaluate that ordinance and decide if they want to change the ordinance to make this possible. So what I'm asking the council for tonight is really this, to allow me to go ahead and start advertising for committee members, get some committee members interviewed, and get them in place, and start building the foundation for a vision process while, as early as two weeks from now, you will receive the revised city ordinance that would allow all this to happen, which would give you time to have a first reading, a second reading, and a twenty-day publication period to let this ordinance come into effect somewhere in that time period that I've proposed on the second page of this memo. So that's all I have to say about that. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to split this item into two pieces, just for clarity. The first item would be to authorize the mayor to create a vision fund citizen committee, as outlined in the ordinance. The second part would be to authorize the mayor to request staff to bring forward an amendment to the current vision fund ordinance that would leave the period of the project planned opened for the city council to decide at the time that the vision project planned is to be implemented.
Okay, any objection to splitting the question into two parts? Okay, so that part is approved then by the council. And so we'll take first item thirty-seven. We'll call it thirty-seven A, the first question, allowing the mayor to assemble the committee and get the... Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-six? Oh, sorry. Thirty-six A, my fault. Thirty-six A, to allow the mayor to establish the committee and start the groundwork for a future vision process. And we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask the question, in the process of appointing the citizens committee, which I do not object to, will we also be directing staff to come up with their projects so it's in accordance with the ordinance as written?
That's a good question. I think that my initial thought was to exclude city projects from this particular 2017 phase because there's six-point-five million dollars that could easily be used up with city projects and not have any community projects be seen in that. But that ultimately is a question up to the council.
I would suggest that we adhere to both staff and public so that we get a good vetting of the needs, and we'll make the decision. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more speaker lights on for this item. Now there is. Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well... So this first... The motion is to allow you to put the citizens group together. But I believe that, on the technical side, is you're allowed to put the citizens group together in accordance with the ordinance. Because I think is all... Part B is to allow you to work with staff to change the number of years, but no other part of the ordinance. And I believe the ordinance does spell out that there is a city project component. So I will support this. But stating in mind that the staff's allowed to... that the balance of the ordinance stays intact as far as city projects.
Okay, thank you. There are no other speaker lights, and we're without a motion. Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second to approve then. All in favor of the first question of item thirty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Second part of this item, thirty-six B, to allow the mayor to direct staff to bring forward a modification to the vision fund ordinance, which would be, as I understand it, limited to the timeframes that are specified within the ordinance. Does everyone think that's accurate? There are some very specific dates written in this ordinance which are now limiting this action. So if we... Oh, here we go. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. When Alderman Estes addressed the Legal and Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday on this, he worded it perfectly, so I'm going to steal the words that he used when trying to address this. Currently in the ordinance for the vision fund, it is specified in there that when the citizens committee is formed by the mayor and affirmed by the city council, that the recommendations they make to the city council is for a five-year project planned. And as Alderman Estes stated last Wednesday, with the current volatility of construction cost, we've seen many of our vision fund projects go over budget, over cost, because... And then we end up robbing from one project in order to finish off another project. And Alderman Estes had suggested that we go ahead and leave the term of the project plan, whether it's one year, three year, five year, whatever is determined, but to open up that language so that it can be determined by the city council when the city council is meeting, how long of the project plan that they are looking at when they go to accept the recommendations for the projects. And so that's why I made the recommendation to split this into two pieces and only deal with the timeframe, because I believe the rest of the ordinance was well-reviewed. And I think it will serve well for not only the city council, but the citizens to know whether their project is actually going to be done with funds available, or if they're in year five, if they have to kind of hold their breath to see if they're going to be on the chopping block or not, so.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, restate the motion.
Motion is to authorize the mayor to request staff to bring forward a modification to the vision fund ordinance to leave the project planned period to be determined by the city council when they develop the vision fund project plan.
Okay, so that is the motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a couple of seconds on that motion. And now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I don't know what the magic time, perfect time, plan period is, one year, two year, three years. But what I've learned is five years is just too darn long. You know, and it's not just volatility. You have groups that come forward to pitch their projects. And of course, they don't know if they're going to get the money. So they're limited as to how much they could spend on the professional side. So sometimes their project costs are wishful thinking. And then you've got... So then they get it designed, and then those costs change. And then you do have some volatility, and then you have time. And all those work against today's dollars. And I guess that's something that we learned is that if... I think we need... Whatever you do, I don't think if you're going out two or three years, you shouldn't spend all the money because you got to make room for some inflation. And so that's kind of where I'm at. And another thing is, on a five-year plan, a project that looks good this year or over a two-year period, things change. You know, it might fall out of favor, and maybe revisiting this a little more often would be wise. Because something that's good today might not be the real deal five years from now. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor for bringing this forward. We could have saved some time six months ago if we'd have done it, when a few of us wanted to, but that's okay. It's... This is a good thing. There's a lot of good projects out there. I do have to agree with Amanda and Brad that the five-year plan can be a little problematic at best. There's a lot of things that happen. A lot of these projects come in with smaller amounts and either go away or end with larger amounts. So I think if we visited this, I think three years would be good. This is something that we can look at when the ordinance come back, and we can decide as a council what we are all comfortable with. But I just wanted to thank the mayor again for bringing this forward because there's a lot of need in Rapid City, and it's hard to put this off for this long. So thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I have a question for Alderman Estes. When you were thinking about this, could I ask him a question, please? Wouldn't this mean that the projects that cost less would probably have a better chance of getting funded this time? So it'd almost be kind of a pre-selection, in a way, if we say, you know, if you come in at a one-year or a three-year project, you have a better chance of getting funded. That's what this says to me.
What was the question?
The question is, I mean, doesn't this put together a pre-selection process? Because people are... The projects that'll cost less money will get... They moved up the queue faster, I think. You know, if you're looking at a five-year project, you probably might as well not even apply.
Well, I guess I'm not... I think we're thinking different things. Because all we're talking about is that... If we decide we want a two-year plan, then we'll probably be doing twelve million dollars. But what...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did misunderstand.
So a one-year plan would have half of 2017. If we do a two-year plan, if somebody says, by God... I mean, the council's got to prove it. Somebody says, we're not going to get this passed unless we do a two-year plan, then I guess we'll be looking at doing two years at half the vision funds at a time.
Which would probably set up for projects that cost less.
That's my interpretation. So that's... Because that's what we're going to... When she says, we're going to set the plan, the plan is how many years? You know, and as the mayor said, we're going to go in... Whatever the answer is, the community's desire, that the answer is going to be for the community center, we'll have twenty million dollars cash. Now, he may be... That may be wishful thinking on his part that it's preconceived that the balance of the debt service will be handled by half the vision fund. But we'll wait and see. And if we only do a one- or a two-year plan, maybe it'll take fifty-five percent of it. And that could be adjusted. So that's why... I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that's why I think we're looking at a short time period because the civic center still is hanging out there. And I don't think any of us would be accused of bad money management by accumulating twenty million towards the civic center. But having said that, I think they want to see some projects. So I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, you did. And I'm inclined to vote for this motion. And I guess it depends on what the projects look like as to what we're going to vote on for a time limit or time length on the vision funds. But I'm glad to see it moving forward, and I will vote in favor of this.
Jerry Wright.
It's never too early to discuss things that may have relevance to this. Although the time of one year is not a problem at all. But I think that we need to look at the fact that if we go beyond that, we can see decisions by the council or the civic center to do something that will need more money, or we may change what we want to do. And we'll exceed that six million. So we need that flexibility beyond that one or two years to go where we need to go. For instance, at three percent, a twenty-year note on a hundred million is six-point-seven million. A three percent, fifteen years, is eight-point-four million. Maybe the council's before... After us, when boards will decide, let's take it for a shorter period of time and so forth. So a word of caution to all of us to look at the big picture. We don't want to lock down what we can or cannot do with the civic center. Okay? Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have a question for the City Attorney's Office, if I may.
Yes.
Wade, can you... I just want to get your opinion, and maybe this is something that can come back to us when this comes back to the council as far as the time period is concerned. My question is more about being able to... The council ultimately being able to approve projects à la carte, if you will. If we can treat certain projects as a three-year plan for them and a one-year plan for another one based on the... How large the... You know, how large this particular project might be for a vision fund. Because we all know they're not the same. Some of them are much larger, more encompassing, and much more costly. So my question to you is that. Do we have to treat them all, from a legal standpoint, the same? Or can we apply an à la carte type of plan depending on the project?
Typical lawyer answer, I think it depends. I think you can... My understanding of what you're looking for is giving the council the discretion to say, okay, this year, we're going to do a one-year plan because we're unsure of the civic center. Maybe in another year, we'll be ready to do a two-year plan with half of each year. The... I think the ordinance can be drafted to leave that up to the council to do a vision round every year, a vision round every two years, every three years, or mix it up. I don't think that you have to lock yourself in in the ordinance to... It has to be a five-year plan or a three-year plan every time.
Okay, so my question is more pinpointed towards each one of these potential vision projects that comes forward. Not so much that we would do it for a year and treat them all the same. I'm saying, do we have the ability to treat them differently based on the proposed project?
So you're saying the example of a project that would take the funding over three years? Is that what you're looking?
Correct.
That's a, it's a little more difficult, but I, I think you can do that. I mean, we've done that in the past. We've allocated a certain amount of money from three different years to a project, and that's subject to change, I guess. We've, we've taken from other projects to, those numbers have been changed over time. Nothing really ever stays the same.
Okay.
Maybe Pauline could weigh in on that as well, but I think you're, I think you're able to do that.
Okay. And that's really just the crux of my question, whether we'd be able to treat them differently, each project, so, thank you. I yield.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for item 36B. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you for that support. I think that's a good deal for us all. Now on to item, items under Community Planning and Development Services, starting with item number 37. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 37 is a request by Advanced Engineering from Mark Simpson for a preliminary subdivision plan for lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Fountain Springs Square, generally described as being located northeast of the intersection of Fountain Plaza Drive and South Plaza Drive. I'll make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number 38 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Brian Gosman for a preliminary subdivision plan for lot 5A, 5B, and 5C of Bison Acres, generally described as being located at 14825 Morningview Drive. I'll make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations. Item number 38. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 39, under Mayor's Items, is a request for temporary free landfill use and landfill rate reimbursement for Hermosa residents for disposal of tornado debris resulting from June 13th, 2016, and this item was continued from the June 20th city council meeting. Mr. Stainbrook, could you provide an update, if there are any, to the council on the situation?
After the insurance companies kicked in, or they'd already paid the citizens that had the damage, and so we got a new total that would be owed of $1,784.03. Yes.
Okay, continue. Do you have anything else to update?
And it's the best I can break it down, because like, if I didn't explain it good enough last time, it was a, a large group of volunteers that, several of us had dump trailers, that just parked them in different areas of the development, and these people would just walk through and pick up this trash, and just hit these different trucks and trailers that we had sitting there. So it's really hard for me to break it down, or anybody to break, to break it down, and try to figure out what insurance company's going to pay what from what trash, because this, this stuff was scattered from our development as far down as Lindell Peterson's property, and, and I know, and I know Brad knows how far that is, but, so, a couple, two or three miles worth of debris that we picked up and hauled, but that's the best I can break it down to this point.
So to clarify, the garbage that you picked up came from other houses or other properties in the area?
It was scattered over, on people's property that didn't have damage. So we just walked through and picked it up from everywhere.
And so the bill that you're facing at the Rapid City landfill now is this $1,784. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to, but basically, I'm going to split the motion into two parts here, and if I can get some reaction on this here from the council first. The first motion is to waive the fee for the landfill disposal that Mr. Stainbrook is getting charged. What is it, $1,784 and some, some odd cents?
Three cents.
Yeah.
Okay, and so what's the second question then?
If I can do that. So the second part would be, and I haven't had a chance to talk to the finance officer or the landfill, but my suggestion is to take this from the council contingency fund.
So does anyone have objection to splitting this item into two questions, then?
I'll second the first part, but not the second part.
Let's talk about first, are we, do, anyone objection to splitting this into two questions?
No.
Okay, so then that's approved. So, we'll go to item 39A, then. The, restate the motion, would you please, Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do is make the first motion as a waiver of the fee for the $1,784.03.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the landfill fee in the amount of $1,784.03.
Yes.
And we have a second. Okay, let's go to Brad Estes, then.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to, to split this question. So, what, what I'm after, Mayor, is I, I had a meeting across the state here, perhaps about a week ago, and the, this came up during that meeting as a conversation piece, and the, the citizens from the entire state were observing what took place here in Rapid City. And they, they basically said, this is really odd, how we're handling this situation. Primarily, one of the things that came out of that conversation statewide is that there was other communities that helped us out during the flood. Now, I wasn't here for the flood, so I don't have all of that history here, but that's what is being relayed to me. So, the people in the outlying communities don't understand that part of it for just a simple $1,700, or near $1,800 for what we're debating about. That, that is the question that's coming across from the state, from citizens across the state. The other part of it is that we've also gotten here, within the city of Rapid City, some help from outlying communities, and I understand that they were also helping us out during Winter Storm Atlas. And, so it, what it boiled down to, for me, was the public perception of what we're doing to the, to the property owners down here, and let alone Mr. Stainbrook, and, and the, perception that's being relayed to the states, or the citizens of the state, not only the state, but here what's happening within the city of Rapid City. So, just to start there, that's what I like to do, is waive that fee.
Okay, now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I will support to waive this fee, and, and I don't, when we come to the second part, I, I see absolutely no reason why we have to come up with a funding source, personally. I think this is a perfect example, and I've said it before, is, is the reason they got into this position is because somebody took the ball and ran with it and, and made things happen. And there was some miscommunication amongst other people, and they, you know, so it was, they started using the landfill, but, but the bottom line is, is, I do agree with Richie, Storm Atlas, or whatever thing, I mean, people from the Hermosa area, wherever, we reacted, we go to where the problem is, you know, and it's just our part, helping these people out in this situation with, with forgiving some landfill fees. I think it's unfortunate that the people East River totally misunderstood, and why they think that they needed to watch this. I, I guess we should have voted on it at the last meeting, because I think it would have passed. I think it was everybody's, not everybody, I, I think it would have passed, to waive the 20-some-hundred-dollar fees. The only thing, we, we just sat, said, let's, let's see if the insurance companies will come up with any money to shake it out, you know, buy it down a little bit. I don't think there was any cold-heartedness on our part, it just made sense to see if any, anybody else was going to come up with any money towards the coinup, so, I'm going to support this, and I, I don't see any reason to come up with any funding source. Mr. Stainbrook, you and I go back since 91, and I know you, you, when you see something that needs to get done, you just get her done. And like I said, two weeks ago, if I have, if I'm in a situation and I have a disaster, I hope you're there, and I appreciate what you help do for your neighbors. Thanks.
And now for the first time ever, Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the first of many. I absolutely believe in the project and moving this forward. I've followed this since you first brought it before the city council last month, and so I certainly support and endorse the first half of this motion. I have a question on the second half, because it sounds like we have to determine where the funding source comes from on an emergency such as this, and do we not have an emergency contingency fund, or something that the city uses from within the city, or outside of the city? This certainly isn't the first of, of emergencies that we have. I mean, think of simple things, just like the flooding that we just had a couple of days ago. Where does that extra funding come from, for that? So is there an emergency contingency fund, or do we have to determine the funding source?
Thank you. We'll, we'll hold the debate on the second half of the motion until we get there, but that'll be fun to listen to. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it probably will be. I want to thank you, Mr. Stainbrook, for everything you did. I mean, people like you stepping up, helping in a situation like this is just amazing. I am sorry that we held off a couple of weeks on this, but I am not sorry about the fact that we saved the taxpayers a few hundred dollars. We are stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I could care less what the public perception from East River is, because we on this dais have to spend your money wisely, and that's what we get elected for. So even if we save $200, over time, that money amounts to a large amount of money. So, I'm sorry it put you in the position, it did, but I'm also, I'm also happy that we did what was right for the citizens of Rapid City. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve waiving the fee. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to the second half of that question, which is to take the money in this $1,784.03 from the council contingency. Am I correct on that, Mr. Nordstrom? Okay. And so we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not totally excited about taking this $1,700 for this specific reason, so if the council wishes to waive the fee totally, I can support that as well. And, and the reason I'm, I'm not excited about taking this $1,700, or $1,784.03, is that it's a fairness issue for me. It is some people from the outside of the city of Rapid City that needed some help, and I'm, I'm willing to give them that, that opportunity, give, have Rapid City, the city of Rapid City, give that assistance to the, the people from outside the city. So I'm willing to listen to what other council members have to say about where this fee, this money is coming from.
So do you want the motion to stand, then, or do you want to withdraw the motion?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I, myself personally, I'd like to see the motion go away, but I'm just kind of taking the temperature of the, the council first, or polling the council members first, and see what they say about this, because I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about this. So I'd like to hear what they have to say on this. So personally, yes, I'd like to waive the fee altogether.
It sounds like Richie Nordstrom wants to withdraw the motion, but it's been seconded, and I don't know what the procedure is.
I have no problem withdrawing it.
Okay, so the motion's withdrawn, there's no motion on the table on this. If you'd still like to talk about it, leave your light up there, and I'll punch your button. You want to say something, Jerry?
I'll say something.
Jerry Wright.
Thank you. It's just, it's just simple accounting. It really is. The fees were incurred when a truck runs across the scale, and it's a debit against the landfill operations, whatever. We, they, it's got to be paid for somehow, or they got to pay for it themselves and absorb it, which is what we're doing, this action. Or if we want to supplement their lost income with the money from this council contingency, we can. We're simply allowing the landfill to pay for it, and that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just add that, this was a, I think we're done asking you questions, if you want to sit down. I think, I'll just add that, so there was a tornado, there was some damage and debris. The neighbors, and specifically one neighbor, helped to take care of the problem. The debris was dumped, so that immediate problem was solved. Delaying this for an additional city council meeting, really the, the whole impact of that was just making Mr. Stainbrook come back to two meetings, and we apologize for that. But the landfill is an important resource, and at this point, from what I can tell, the city or the city council has no immediate tool to give emergency access to that city resource. It seems logical that we would have something in the future that would allow the Public Works Director to waive fees in the event of a qualifying event, but that procedure does not exist at this time, so that could be for a future discussion. So, item number 39A, since we divided, it was passed, and that waives the fee, so your bill will, that much will, will come off of your bill at the landfill. And then item number 39B, the funding source will then die for a lack of motion. So, we are moving on. Thank you, everyone, for that. Now, the moment we've been waiting for, the public hearing items on items 40 through 47, we're going to open public hearing on items 40 through 47. I have seven speaker request forms from the audience for item 47, and, so... Yeah, I'm sure we'll just pull 47. So, anyway, there's seven of you. I trust that at least five or six of you will be wanting to repeat everything. I just want to let you know, you don't have to. It's okay. We'll call on some of these speakers. You'll have three minutes. You approach the, approach the podium and state your name, and we'll get on with it. Okay, just a, just a small change in the plan. We're going to go ahead, since item 47 is really the last, for the most part, the last item on the agenda, we just have these six other items to get out of the way. So we'll, if we do that, then you'll have your statement on item 47, right before the council debates, and it'll be fresh in their minds. So, item number 40 is the only consent public hearing item. So we have a motion to approve and a second, item 40. All in motion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that's the end of the consent calendar, so non-consent public hearing items, let's go to Amanda Scott for item 41.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 41 is a second reading of ordinance 6118 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City municipal code. A request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Richard M. Kincaid for the rezoning from low-density residential district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located at 3775 Dias Avenue. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to speak one sec-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to speak one second on this. And I wanted to thank the Public Works Department, and I also wanted to thank the Planning Department on, on all their help on this. I worked with this property owner for the last six months to get this taken care of and approved. And this was one of these rare instances when a piece of property comes from the county, gets annexed into the city, and it's basically, it was annexed in at the wrong zoning. So it was an unfortunate situation that this property owner got into, and I just want to thank the city for helping and taking care of this problem. Thank you very much.
Okay, so a, we have a motion and a second on the floor for item 41. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item number 42 is a second reading of ordinance 6119 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Advanced Engineering for Mark Simpson for a rezoning from general agricultural district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located north of Fountain Plaza and South Plaza Drive intersection. I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second for item, for approval of item number 42. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number 43 is a second reading of ordinance number 6120 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Advanced Engineering for Mark Simpson for the rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located at 1750 Fountain Springs Drive. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item.
Item number 44 is a request by FIS Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Roger and Heidi Hanslick for the vacation of a right-of-way for property generally described as being located at 4018 Calabaha Street. This item was continued from the June 6 city council meetings, and stipulations of approval were not met. Staff is recommending this item, and I make the motion that this item be continued to July 18th. The stipulations have still not been met.
Okay, motion and a second to continue this item. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 45 is a request by FMG Incorporated for Holiday Companies for the vacation of a right-of-way for property generally described as being located in the northwest corner of the intersection of Elkville Road and South Dakota Highway 44. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion and a second for approval of item 45. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 46 is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision of a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Holiday Companies Incorporated for a final planned development overlay to allow construction of a convenience store with gas sales and a car wash for property generally described as being located in the southeast corner of US Highway 16 and Catron Boulevard. The appeal has been withdrawn. I make a motion to uphold or for the withdrawal by applicant of this appeal. Or acknowledge the appeal. Thank you, Walderman Nordstrom. Acknowledge the appeal withdrawn.
Okay, is that, in other words, taking no action?
Taking no action.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for taking no action to acknowledge the withdrawal of the appeal. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we're on to item 47, and so let's start the public speaking with Michelle Hoffman. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Hoffman. I reside at 4113 Corral Drive, directly south of the property at issue. I am opposed to the conditional use permit. Ordinance 17.04.315 sets forth the maximum cumulative allowable size of a private garage, specifically 1,500 square feet or 30% of the gross floor area of the dwelling. In the present case, the homeowner may construct a garage space up to 1,500 square feet under the ordinance. Unfortunately, the proposed building will be 1,840 square feet. This is in addition to the existing attached two-and-a-half-car garage, which totals 600 square feet. So we're talking about a cumulative space, square footage of 2,440 square feet. This is 900 square feet in excess of what is permitted by statute, by ordinance. The ordinance further states that in no event, in no event shall the size of the building footprint of the garages exceed the footprint of the dwelling unit. The footprint of the dwelling unit in this case is 1,376 square feet. So we're now talking about a garage, cumulative garage space of over 1,000 square feet in excess of the dwelling footprint. Furthermore, in considering granting a conditional use permit, the proposed garage must be consistent with the residential character of the property and with the surrounding neighborhood. It is not. We are essentially talking about constructing a barn in a residential neighborhood. I understand that the city is not in the business of enforcing covenants. However, the covenant that follows with the land, in this case, Westview Estates, is direct evidence as to the character of the property and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The ordinance, excuse me, the covenant specifically states that no building except a single-family dwelling house shall be erected or maintained on the property. Furthermore, that only one building shall be constructed on any one lot, and no lot shall be further subdivided. The proposed detached garage is in contravention of the covenants and does not fit with the residential character of the neighborhood and the surrounding property. And the bottom line is granting this conditional use permit is placing the interests of one individual over the interests of the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Daniel Hoffman.
My name's Dan Hoffman, Michelle's husband. Per Allen, Mayor Allender's request, I won't repeat my wife, although I'm sure she would love me to. Let me just speak generally about the ordinances and covenants. I think ordinances, covenants, laws that we all have in this society have been developed over a period of many, many years. A lot of thought and effort has been put into them. I don't think they're hastily constructed. I think when there is genuine concern and project senses that come up that really are not even close to satisfying the covenant and the ordinance that is applicable, then we have to question, why do we even have these ordinances and covenances? I mean, I know there needs to be some flexibility. Along those lines, I think there's a solution to this, that the neighbors, and hopefully Mr. Studer, would be, would be acceptable to him, and that would be for him to build a one- or two-stall garage, attached to the garage he already has. That satisfies everything in the ordinance, it satisfies the covenant, and he gets a large amount of additional garage space. So that, to me, would be the solution that would be acceptable to everybody, and I have polled the neighbors. That's all I have. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Now Jack Moore.
My name's Jack Moore, and I live on 4040 Corral Drive. We've been there 38 years, and this is the first time I remember ever protesting anything. So I'm not a professional at this. But to me, we've got a residential neighborhood that's been there ever since the flood, is about when it developed, and everybody has a single-family house, maybe a few attached, detached garages, but I can't even think of one of those, mostly attached garages. Now all of a sudden, they want to build a warehouse, is what it is, that's bigger, as big as a house, and it just doesn't fit in with our scheme of life. I mean, it's been, it's a good neighborhood, and many of us have been there for many years, and just don't like to have it uprooted like this. It shouldn't even, to me, it's not even, shouldn't even be discussed because it doesn't meet any of the covenants, not even close. So I'm against it, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And now Jackie. It's family night tonight.
Not sure I can say I'm really the better half, but at any rate, I also reside at 4040 Corral Drive, and as my husband said, we have been residents there for 38 years. And I never made any comments at the Planning Commission because I, you know, just didn't feel comfortable. I have nothing to add as far as anything legal pertain to this issue. My concern is, in fact, my husband and I, when this structure, if this structure was put up, we wouldn't even see it from our location because of all the pine trees that would cover that area. My concern is, being a neighbor in that neighborhood, that we, we do have the right, you know, to express our concerns. And so that's why I went to the Planning Commission meeting, and I'm here before you all tonight to say that I have a concern that it could set a precedent of what would be possible other issues for similar structures that could, you know, possibly be added to our community, our, our neighborhood. And so we like to maintain what we have now, and it is a lovely area, and we appreciate it so much, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now Kay, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's Streisel or Strissel. Strissel?
Strissel.
Strissel.
Hi, Kay Strissel, 4160 Corral Drive. And I wanted to say, first of all, that there was a lot of concern over the Studer's garage sales. They've been a big problem for many years, and they've caused a lot of inconvenience to the neighborhood. But today, we're here specifically to talk about the building and to object to the building itself being built. And while we remain concerned about the building that they are talking about being used for commercial purposes, basically as a store, we're against the building being built for any reason. As it's been stated, it's against city, the city ordinances without this permit, it's against the community covenants, and it's against all the neighbors' concerns. Letters went out to the adjoining neighbors, and virtually all of them have said, no, this is not something we want to start having popping up in the neighborhood. As I understand it originally, they wanted to build an entire secondary residence right next to their home with living space and a second story and everything, and that was rejected based on it not needing certain codes or restrictions or whatever. And so that was good. And then they proposed this oversized garage with the use of this conditional use permit. But this is not, as you've heard, a permit to allow a normal garage, not even an oversized garage. This is a huge structure. It's, as she said, like a barn amongst homes, and it is something you can imagine you wouldn't want on your own street amongst your homes, almost like a commercial sort of a building. They currently have the two-and-a-half-car garage, which is 600 square feet. They want to add another 1,840 square feet for a total of 2,440 square feet, and at almost 2,500 square feet, this rivals their house in footprint and size, and it's entirely inappropriate for the style and the look of our neighborhood. The ordinances and covenants are in place to protect the residents and to protect our property values, and we see no reason why any of these should be pushed aside to allow them to build this structure against all the other neighbors. There's just no reasonable residential use that justifies garage space that's larger than most homes. It's large enough to house 10 to 12 cars. It's just so out of scale. You have the signatures before you, you have the covenants before you, and we're hoping that this, you will keep this from permanently altering the look and feel of our neighborhood and negatively affecting our property values. Please don't allow it to go forward, and we hope that you will vote to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it, is it Stephen? Stefan.
Thank you for allowing me to talk on this subject. I just have a few points to make. My name is Stefan Strissel. My wife was just speaking, Kay Marie, so I think she covered most of the points beautifully, and the other community members as well. But I wanted to also say thank you for all that you do for this beautiful town. I've lived here for, I think, about 32, 33 years, and I've been all over the world. My job takes me, and every time I get back here, I land at that airport. It's a beautiful town, and it doesn't happen by accident. Thank you for all your hard work. And that's kind of a little bit what's going on here with our little community. You know, some, the, the individual wants to do something, and it's so out of line with this beautiful community. We all get along, everybody's happy, and it's just a lovely area to live. I feel so blessed to live there among such nice neighbors, but I can't understand why we would be even standing here wasting your time when the ordinance is against it and the covenants are black and white. It's not gray, it's not, you know, being mean or anything. It's just, if you don't uphold covenants, the value of your property, you have no idea where it might go. And so it's, it's kind of in a way a little bit scary to think that something like this could even be under review, that, that when you buy into something and, and, you know, you go into tremendous debt for 30 years, you're counting on the rules to, to help you maintain your value. So it, it, I guess what I'm saying is, it kind of seems like, oh, all this talk about a garage, it's a real big deal, because if this should be allowed to go forward, we're setting a very dangerous precedent, not just for Westview Estates, but for this entire community, that you know what? Covenants really don't matter. You can come and get them defeated. That's really scary, so. And I know that you all are all very, very smart and brilliant, understand planning and how dangerous this type of thing is, and being very sincere on that, you know. So I, I, I'm really humbly asking, please do not allow this to go forward. I think it's, I think it would be a very bad thing on all the different levels that I just mentioned. The entire neighborhood, there's not any support for this from the, from the neighborhood. There's only, only the owners of the property that want to do it. So kindly, please do not grant this. Thank you very much for your time and all that you all do. Like I've said, I mean that sincerely. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Erickson.
Hello, my name is Sue. Hello, my name is Sue Erickson. I live at 4130 Corral, neighbors to all these lovely people for 38 years, and we've all gotten along wonderfully until right now when we're having to deal with this. I don't like being here, but this building that's being put up does not adhere to our covenances. And I remember when we bought our property that many years ago, it was a big deal to us, and I love it there. And I don't know why the covenances or the ordinance of the city are not being honored. I'm concerned that this new separate building will be used as commercial property for the selling of goods, as the existing garage has been used in the past years. And I'm also concerned that the selling of goods and the large structural size of the building will lower my property value, and I hope that this does not pass. I'm sure there's other ways he could build a garage according to the ordinances of the city and of the covenants that we signed, all of us, years ago, and I hope you'll be fair with this. Thank you.
And now we'll read item 47 into the record. And that is, Appeal of Planning Commission's Decision of a Request by Adam Wagner for Skull Construction for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow an Oversized Garage for Property, Generally Described as Being Located at 4120 Corral Place. The recommendation, on June 9, 2016, the Planning Commission approved with stipulations. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. I'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very interesting one, and I hope that this council doesn't get into the position where we start ruling and enforcing on covenances, because we will be busy 24/7. Can I ask one of the homeowners, maybe Michelle, a question?
Yes.
Oh, wait, until you get to the podium. Typically, covenances are taken care of by homeowners' associations. Do you guys have an active homeowners' association?
I don't think we have meetings, but we do have a group which comprises of, comprises the residents of the neighborhood, the covenants are, which are all the individuals the covenants apply to. We all, when we bought our homes, knew that these covenants applied.
Okay. Yeah. Typically, now, in some of the newer subdivisions that have covenances like this, have a homeowners' association. If somebody proposes something, they have to take it to the association first. To me, this is a pretty easy one. I have no problem denying this because it doesn't fall within the ordinance. Now, if it did fall within the ordinance, then that would be very different, because I am a big personal property rights guy, and I do believe that as long as you're falling within the ordinance, that you have the right to do what you want to do on your property. So I will be voting, we're going to have to word this too, and so hopefully somebody will come forward with a motion, but I will be voting in your favor because it does fall outside of the ordinance, and I do think that, I don't, how many of you were at the Planning Commission when, really? Okay. Okay. All right. Anyway.
And if I may, along those lines, Mr. Roberts, I really want to emphasize the point that you are making, and that's specifically ordinance 17.10.030. That sets forth the parameters under which this garage, the conditional permit, could be issued for this private garage. And the very first criteria under subsection N is if the proposed garage is consistent with the residential character of the property and with the surrounding neighborhood. It just is not.
I'm more worried about the square footage. We're quite a ways outside of the square footage parameters, and I think that alone is enough to deny this. So, thank you, Michelle, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the appeal.
Second.
And then, if I could, I'd like to maintain the floor.
Is the motion to overturn the Planning Commission's approval of the building?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
And I make the motion because I, I believe, you know, I'm kind of, kind of echo some of Mr. Roberts' words as well. I'm a property rights guy as well, and I believe that if you're doing things within the ordinance, you know, if we're dealing with a housing association as well, it didn't sound like it was a paying, active housing association. I wanted to ask that question because ultimately, I had hoped that some of these things would be taken care of at that level before they get to the city. If HOA is threatening legal action against an owner, are they willing to forego the costs that they might, or the money that they might have used for something they'd hoped the HOA would approve? That would most likely be no, and there wouldn't be an issue, but here we are. But purely, it doesn't fall within the ordinance for the city, and I agree, again, agree with Mr. Roberts. For me, this is a very simple one. There's opportunity, obviously, still for the owner to do things to expand their current garage space so that it's less invasive, if you will, and with the layout of the neighborhood, it sounds like there are some issues. I had hoped code enforcement, because I wanted to ask a question there, if there have been calls on previous, at this property from previous store issues or sales issues, if there had been some calls to code enforcement. But as it stands, with the information that we have, I can readily, obviously, support the appeal. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support Mr. Laurenti's motion. I grew up Wall, and, you know, and I guess I say that because, you know, the slogan down there is, "He who dies with the most toys wins," and that's what I think about when I look at a garage like this, and I don't know what these people for sure are going to use this for, but it's just, you know, it's, when you, when you have a need, in my mind, for a building like that, and you make a decision where you're going to live, I mean, you impact and you move and you live where you can have something like that, you know? And when I look at this and I see that the base square footage of just this building alone is more than what your cumulative is, it just, that pretty much does it for me. But I, you know, there's a reason for having ordinances, and there's a reason to, you know, to get an exception. You know, we, we're a city of snowbirds and a lot of motorhomes, and, you know, if sometimes you gotta, you know, you know, you have a little difference and you, you know, then that's a whole different deal. You could stick five motorhomes in this thing, so I, I'm going to support Mr. Laurenti's motion. And, you know, the covenants, I'm not an attorney, but I believe that I read somewhere in state that the covenants automatically expire after 25 years, and I could be wrong, but you guys might want to look into this, but you're not here to ask us to uphold covenants. We're here to look at the ordinance, so I yield.
Okay, go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. As the current city liaison to the Planning Commission, may I ask Robert a couple questions?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, from Community Planning over there. He's representing Community Planning for us tonight. Robert, if, I'm going off of my memory from this meeting when this came forward. There were four citizens or four neighbors that came forward. They didn't readily speak as much as they did tonight. Their concerns at that time were more directed for, from past activity on this ground as far as neighbors and fitting into the neighborhood. The owner was at that meeting, and I believe that the direction that was given to the Planning Commissioners for consideration at that time was, covenances cannot be considered by the city, only the city ordinances, and that the covenants are handled through civil courts. Is my memory serving me correctly from what the direction was?
That's correct.
So it, I appreciate the homeowners coming forward with their restrictions on their covenants, and I understand that, you know, that's part of the rules that we all abide to live by when you move into a neighborhood, but as far as the city itself, we can only consider what is in our current ordinance.
Yes.
And then, just for clarification, I will be supporting Alderman Laurenti's motion on the floor today, because what the Planning Commissioners then were directed was that they could consider the special use or the conditional use permit for this oversized garage. The homeowner did follow all the procedures in bringing this forward, but the Planning Commissioners were subject to consider whether it actually fit into the neighborhood.
Yes.
And so if the City Council upholds this, we're basically listening to what the neighbors are saying and giving evaluation that really an oversized garage of this magnitude really would not fit into the current neighborhood.
That's correct.
Thank you. And that was the same direction that the Planning Commissioners, they had a wonderful discussion. City staff was very, very fair in giving both sides and leaving the decision up to the Planning Commissioners at that time. But I, again, since it's before City Council, I'll be supporting Alderman Laurenti's motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Jerry Wright.
I too will support, obviously, I second it, but I think one issue that has not been talked about too much is apparent abuse in the past of this site being used for repeated ongoing yard sales, garage sales, and no enforcement. But also understand there were no complaints, so folks out there, wake up, if there's a problem, let the city know, number one. And I think the city needs to get tougher on this, because under the personal property definition, as I read it, it says that people that are selling this stuff needs to be stuffed from their home, generated from their life and their style, it's not to be imported or bought or imported and resold and so forth, and this apparently was what was happening. And I'm going to use the quacking duck syndrome. If it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. So I think with that history in the past, in an oversized garage, I think they were trying to buy a, build a Walmart on Corral Drive, so I'll support the amendment. Thank you.
And thank you. I'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Community Planning, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Curious what, since I wasn't at the Planning Session, what was the justification for the conditional use permit for the structure?
There's a variety of criteria that are supposed to be met with any conditional use permitted, and specifically, there are additional criteria for a private garage. In this instance, with regard to a private garage that wouldn't necessarily meet the requirements of a standard garage, or in this case, something under 1,500 square feet, there are requirements to meet the character of the neighborhood. And the case, in this instance, staff looked at the zoning ordinance in the neighborhood, which is its own low density residential district. We examined, examined the proposal to ensure that it met those zoning requirements regards to setbacks, lot coverage, building heights. The applicant did propose to build the structure in the same architectural style and character as the existing home. So with those conditions being proposed by the applicant, we felt that it did meet the character of the neighborhood. There is a requirement that the proposed garage meet, or not be used for commercial purposes. That was an issue of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. However, if you look at the staff report, you'll note the first stipulation is that the garages, or any of the garages on the property were to be, were not to be used for commercial purposes. So that was built into the approval of the conditional use permit, that it would not be used for those purposes. One thing that the Planning Commission did require or request is that they revise their plan to show additional landscaping to act as a buffer to the garage. The applicant did provide a revised plan, which showed some trees were being planted along the south side of the garage as well. Other than that, the criteria for a conditional use permit look at the character of the neighborhood, the character of the residents, and the proposed development itself. Any alterations to drainage, to the utilities in the area, those types of issues are examined with each conditional use permit.
And, you know, also, just while I have a minute here, I just want to thank the residents for coming out. Actually, when I saw this on the agenda, I drove out to your neighborhood and tried to imagine this kind of structure sitting where it's at, and while they have the land for it, it, in my opinion, didn't fit the character of that area, beautiful neighborhood. So I will also be supporting Alderman Laurenti's motion on the floor, and thank you for your time.
Now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out to the citizens, I appreciate bringing this forward, but at the same time, I'm not going to admonish you for not knowing the ordinances about the commission sales, the yard sales, et cetera. But now that that opportunity has become available to you, there's some other things that you may want to become aware of. The other area of concern for me on this issue is if he, if there is the reapplication for this, it comes back in a different form, please keep us informed about it. And where I'm really, an additional concern is if the structure is going to be designed and built for a second story, my biggest, largest concern would be a potential living area above that garage. So be aware, and I'm not expecting you to know all the ordinances, I don't even know them all either, so. But on the yard sales, if those commission sales and et cetera, we can assist you on what that language is and how that works. And don't be shy, come in forward to ask those questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, to approve the appeal or to overturn the Planning Commission's decision in favor of, in favor of the neighbors. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for, thank you for showing up, everyone. Now, item number 48, the bill list, we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill list. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn, and a second. We're adjourned.